I will make a note of that right now.
Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Buchanan City Commission. It's Monday, June 24th, 7:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Will you join me, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under data, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have roll call, please?
Denison.
Here.
Whedon.
Here.
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Present.
Swam. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Someone would like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Shawna makes the motion.
Thank you. Support? Bianski? You have a roll call, please?
Denison.
Yes.
Whedon.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment on agenda items only. If you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium, state your name for the minutes. Okay, seeing none, let's move down to the consent agenda. Someone would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there support?
This is Money. I'll support.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Whedon.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Denison.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving down to scheduled matters from the floor, Baker Tilly Financial Analysis Update. Gentlemen, have the floor. Thank you. The first one is the
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Second one here is the
Sewer Fund.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, well, good evening. I'm Jeff Rau, partner with Baker Tilly. I'm actually filling in for Andy Campbell this evening. I'm actually, I actually work out of our Mishawaka office, so I'm just down the road and but I've been apprised of really what's going on with the project and just wanted to this evening, provide an update in terms of results of the draft rate study for both the Water Fund and the Sewer Fund, and then obviously answer any try to answer any questions that you have here this evening. So what we've passed out, or what I've passed out, are just some supporting schedules that we can kind of walk through, just you can use as a reference. But I'll just kind of try to summarize really what our proposal is at this point in time, knowing that I know that the city is still considering, you know, what the exact scope is going to look like for both USDA projects. What we've assumed at this point to be conservative is the full project or full loan amount that's been authorized through USDA per their letter of conditions. So for the Water Fund, that was assuming, or that is assuming, a nine million dollar project. And for the Sewer Fund, we're assuming about a seven and a half million dollar project. So we'll just maybe start with the Water Fund. So as we do with any rate study, we really are focused on, you know, three, three main components. That is providing rates that are sufficient to cover operation maintenance replacement costs, the ongoing expenditure needs of the utility, and then also looking at what the future capital needs are, both cash funded capital needs and then also financed bond issue needs. So what we've included here in this study, obviously, is the operating cost. Starting with operating costs, that's what we're showing here, just again, some supporting documentation on the first schedule. We just show here sort of a history of the Water Fund's operating expenses, which, you know, just note has been upward trending since 2020, went down a little bit in 2021, but rising to, you know, estimated to be about $785,000 for June 30, 24 fiscal year. So obviously, we're seeing some, some increases in, in operation and, and maintenance costs. We're looking at building that into the into the rate structure. The next page is really the repayment schedule on the Water Fund, Water Utility's outstanding debt. So as you know, the utility has revenue bonds from 2010 that are outstanding, paying roughly $120,000 per year. Those actually roll off fully paid in 2029, 2030, that you'll see there. But the 2023 bonds that are also outstanding continue on through 2053 until they're paid off. So really, I want to point out on this schedule, again, just acknowledging those two debts are bonds that are still outstanding in that the utility will see a drop off aside from the USDA bonds that we're talking about adding, but there, there would be a drop off in debt service in year 2030, 31, by about $120,000 per year. So there would be some, some relief there, starting in 2030, 31. So the third and final schedule reflects the, the proposed rate plan. And as you see, this is a what's being proposed is a, a multi-year rate adjustment or rate plan, if you will. So the first column that you see there, 23 and 24, represents the current rates, current revenues, current expenditures, just to sort of provide a baseline. So in 23 and 24, of course, we have both the ready to serve charge and also the commodity charge. And if we're looking at, you know, a current, call it an average bill, assuming 4,000 gallons, customers pay currently $44.19. So that's the blue, first blue highlighted number there. So what we're looking at in order to, so what we've done is we projected out operating costs, like I said, projected out future capital, both bond funded and cash flow funded through 28, 29. And so in order to support operations, in order to support the capital plan, and also pay back the estimated proposed debt service associated with USDA bond, we'd be looking at roughly 8% across the board increase per year. And I understand, I think the city has implemented 8% increases over the last year or two. So we'd be proposing a similar scenario here. So with the 8% increase, that comes out to, on average, about just over $4 increase per year to the average user. So be looking at a rate, again, of 44.19 currently. And that would go up, again, on average, about $4 per year to a rate of about $64, $65 to the average user out in 2028 and 2029. So every charge, like I said, ready to serve charge and also commodity charge would be increased, you know, that, that same, that same percentage. Down towards the bottom of the schedule, you'll see the projected unrestricted cash. That's the very last number that you see there. So after all expenses are paid, the utility would still have, and, and the existing reserves are met, the utility would still have about 1.3, 1 million, about 1.3 million dollars set aside for, as unrestricted cash to be used for absorb any increases in costs and any unexpected large capital expenditures or repairs. So this would be really sort of the bare minimum. I guess I will point out, if you look under the I think it's the fourth line from the bottom, you'll see net cash flow. And you'll see that even with the 8% increases over that five-year period, we are estimating some negative cash flows each year up until we get into the last year, which you see a positive cash flow of 243,000. So if you add all those up, really the utility would still be eating into its cash by about $166,000 over that five-year period. So not quite break even, but just a little bit, a little bit less than break even. So I'm just gonna maybe pause there and be happy to entertain, before we move to sewer, be happy to entertain any questions, initial questions or initial thoughts, comments on the Water Fund. Obviously, these are still estimated, you know, until the city decides on a final scope, which will determine the final bonding amount. You know, these estimates are still to be determined or in draft. One thing I forgot to mention, actually, which you're probably already aware, though, the this is important piece of this discussion, but the USDA loan is a 40-year loan. So that certainly helps in spreading out the costs over the, the longest period possible, given any agency. And the interest rate that USDA is committed to is about 1.3%, 1.375%. So very competitive interest rate, low subsidized interest rate, which I think was committed several years ago. So in terms of you know, most competitive financing package, aside from grant money, this is about as competitive as you can get within the bond market.
I just want to make it perfectly clear what this is for. This is for the Front Street Project, correct? And basically, this 8% increase is an ongoing, it's going to be an ongoing thing.
Correct.
I mean, it's never going to be able to stop unless we come up with some magical godmother or godfather that's going to give the city a bunch of money.
Well, yeah, will it continue at the 8%? Well, for the next five years, that's what we've projected. But one thing I, I guess I'll kind of point out again is you know, your outstanding, the city's outstanding 2010 bonds. You know, they roll off one year after this projection ends.
Okay.
So that's going to free up $120,000 per year. So once we get out past year five, there could be a possibility that depending on how their cost, whether they go up or go down, you may not need an 8% in your six.
So we could lower that down essentially?
Yeah, but
Other than, other than the rest of the city needs to
I know, we're in the government, we're going to have to, people, I'm trying to explain it because I was part of this 8% because people just don't understand it. I mean, the infrastructure's 100 years old. And our water bills have always been complained about being expensive. But on the other hand, we haven't done anything with the water money that we were getting. We had to have the sewer plant, we had to have the DPW plant, we have to do Front Street. And where else are we supposed to puke up the money? There's some questions we're going to have to answer about the 8% on the ready to serve. That would be a $4, you know, but there's things the way you're projecting it, we don't even dare back off that 8% on the ready to serve, correct?
Correct. Correct.
So I'm not disagreeing or really asking you a question. There's things out there that, you know, there's forces out there that are screaming blue bloody murder, that we're taking all kinds of money and we're not answering for it.
The 8% is a is a best practice, isn't it? I mean, isn't it recommended by, who did, I'm trying to think who that got recommended by? That 8%?
Yeah, I'm not sure originally, but the 8% is
It was me.
Was he, okay. But the 8%, you know, again, just looking at the numbers, that's what it's actually going to take for the next five years to almost get to break even. That doesn't get you all the way to break even, but it gets you pretty close to break even.
Well, the numbers were crunched really hard when we were deciding on this. And all of the communities at that time, it's not because I'm a mathematician, you know, I'm not a mallet, brilliant genius or anything, but the numbers were crunched and the communities were raising their water bills 50 and 60% at a pop. And I said, we got to come up with a number, and we can't do this every four or five years. We got to do this and just do this repetitively.
Yeah.
So
Yeah, that, it, it is a, this is a becoming more and more of a common practice. I know in the, the rate work that I do, you know, we're always recommending small annual increases. You know, the days where we'd go 15 years without adjusting rates is kind of gone by the wayside because of what you talked about, the aging infrastructure, combined sewer overflows, long-term control plans on the sewer side, plus just water quality, you know, water quality issues in general. This has become, become the norm.
That's interesting, because that's exactly how we got in this situation.
Well, I was just gonna say, it'd be interesting to see the previous 40 years and what the increases were.
They weren't. I don't think they were.
It'd be interesting to see.
And they didn't do capital planning with it.
Well, they went from bills every four months, you'd get a bill every three months, rather, and it was water, sewer, and garbage. And then Tom Hedker reduced it to monthly, and I screamed, I wasn't a commissioner at that time, but I happen to be down here. And I screamed, all you're doing is so that you can increase the bill. And they said that it was because people couldn't pay the bill. Well, it was exactly what I called it. They took the trash off the water sewer bill, and then I don't know when they added the ready to serve. But it's been a progression for at least 20 years. So
And the industry that we had in town helped offset
Right.
A lot of that.
But there's a lot of water that we're not collecting on either.
Right.
Some water loss, yeah. And, and, you know, to the extent you can get that corrected, that obviously helps, you know, eliminating any of that. But you know, the more, I know I'm stating the obvious, but the more you can you know, support the utility's financial situation with the, the larger volume users, that's only going to help, you know, create some economies of scale with, with your residential class, smaller users. But, you know, really, 8%, this is anecdotal, but a lot of the communities I work with now are seeing at one time, 100%, 166%. I mean, these are numbers that we're seeing now with all the unfunded mandates and aging infrastructure. So I know I'm not paying the bill here, so it's easy for me to say. I know it's, an increase is an increase. It could certainly be a lot worse, for sure. Okay, anything else on the water side, then we'll just transition to sewer then. So again, the sewer project, again, this is associated with USDA bond. I'm rounding here, but approximately, we've, we've assumed the seven, seven and a half million dollars, which is per the USDA letter of conditions. Not going to repeat a lot of what I've already talked about on the water side, but in terms of operating expenses, we're seeing increases. That's, we're really seeing that with every utility. You know, post-COVID, post-2020, there was hyperinflation for a couple of years, but we're still seeing decent amount in inflation. So we're seeing roughly, we saw roughly 24% increase in operating costs from 2021 to 2023. I kind of threw out 2020 because that was sort of an anomaly. But $708,000 operating cost in 2021. And then in 2023, 878,000. So roughly 24% increase over that period. In terms of the outstanding debt, similar, similar to water, utility has outstanding debt, sewer fund has three bonds, the 2009 bonds, the 2020 revenue bonds, and then the 2023 DPW bonds. And combined, the utility pays about $765,000 per year. Once the 2009 bonds are paid off after 29, 2029, 2030, you'll, you'll notice out to the right that the annual debt service goes up by about $50,000 per year. And that's a result of the, the way the 2020 revenue bonds were structured, they were structured to wrap around the outstanding bonds, so there was lower debt service earlier on. And then once the previous debt was paid off, then we'd see an increase in the 2020 bonds. So that, that's really the primary reason there, seeing that $50,000 increase. So after that, then, you know, annual payments would be $822,000 per year, outstanding bonds. On page three, similar to, similar to water, what we've assumed and built in here is an 8% per year increase. Now, the, the only difference here is that with with sewer, we're, we're projecting or proposing an 8% increase per year for the next four years. And then in year five, between year four, year five, we were suggesting taking another look, again, at the, at the rates at that point to determine whether 8% is appropriate or something, something else is appropriate. So current rate, current sewer fund rate, assuming 4,000 gallons, is $72.18. See that first number there? And then an 8% increase per year, on average, would, would be about six and a half bucks on the sewer bill. So that rate would, excuse me, that rate would increase from about $72, currently up to about 98, a little over $98 at the end of year four, or in year four, rather. So if you scroll down a little bit, the, I, I have a, a blue highlighted line down towards the bottom. It says estimated debt service, 2024 USDA bonds. And you'll see first year, $70,000, and then it is bumped up to 243,000. So the $243,000 would be the estimated full payment of the seven and a half million at the 1.375%. And again, that's a 40-year, 40-year loan.
Is 4,000 gallons for a family of four or a family of three?
Either or neither. It's just, 4,000 gallons is typically considered a rough average of a residential home. Knowing that some use less if you're a single, you know, retiree or single, single home. Obviously, if you have three kids, three or four kids at home, and you're going to use more. But on the whole, 4,000 gallons is considered to be about an average.
Okay.
And that's not specific to the city, that's just
So that's just an average world. Okay, it's not figuring kids or family size or nothing?
No.
Okay.
So then the, the bottom line would, you know, reflect the unrestricted cash that we would estimate the utility to have, or the sewer fund to have at the end of each one of those years. Again, you know, ranging anywhere from about 1.6 or 1.5 all the way up to about 2.1 million dollars, knowing that keeping in mind that a portion of the, that aging infrastructure is not only being paid for through the bond, but also on a pay-as-you-go basis. So it's important to keep cash on hand so that you have those funds to be able to do those on an annual basis. So that, that's, that's about it on, on the sewer fund. Again, kind of similar story. Numbers are a little bit different, but similar story. If you kind of, just to summarize it, you know, the 8% per year for water and sewer would reflect a little over $10 increase per month to the average user when you combine the two. And obviously, rates would need to be adjusted at some point in anticipation of the bond prior to the, prior to the bonds being sold, so that USDA knows that the city has the means to, to repay the debt once it's closed. So happy to answer any questions you have.
Does anybody have any questions?
No, I'm good.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Yeah, my pleasure. Thank you for your, your time. As you absorb it, some more of the information, feel free to let us know if you have any questions, comments, concerns through Tim, and we'll be in contact and be happy to answer any questions you have.
Great.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, moving down to item nine, reports by departments, committees, and boards. Item A, Community Development Report. Mr. Rich Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Just a couple of brief items for you tonight. First of all, we have Redbud, Redbud Roots up for two renewals. I'll remind you that the majority of their renewals come in the first quarter of the year, and then there's two that come typically in June or July. These are they. We have a Redbud Roots adult use permit for 455 Post Road and a medical use permit for 215 Post Road. The applications have been received. We have received payment and run the background checks to the satisfaction of the Buchanan Police Department. And my recommendation is for approval.
So these are, these are broken out, these are separated. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the adult use?
I'd move to approve the adult use, excuse me, adult use permit for Redbud Roots at 455 Post Road as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. You have a roll call, please?
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Denison.
Yes.
Whedon.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then item B. Do you make a motion?
Shawna, I'll move to approve the medical use permit, Redbud Roots at 215 Post Road.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support. Well, with a question.
May I ask you support and discussion?
Why are they buying a medical license? Is there something that they need to do that the dispensaries don't need to do?
They have a market for it, and they continue to renew that permit.
So they are still selling medical marijuana to some degree? That's your answer?
Presumably, yes.
That's it.
We have a motion, we have support. Do we have a roll call, please?
Money.
Yes.
Denison.
Yes.
Whedon.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, second item, I've been keeping you up to date on the City of Buchanan's grant award from of CDBG funds of $300,000. Couple meetings ago, I came before you to notify you that we'd be releasing an RFP for a third-party administrator as has been recommended by Mishta in several surrounding communities. We have done that, and we have received one response from the Ramsey Group. This was the firm that we were hoping to get a response from because we had been in touch with Sanjay Vitale, who has done this work for 25 years and also all around the country and in for many years in our neighboring community of Niles. So she's familiar with the local community and landscape. And we're excited to be kicking this off with her, and we're asking for permission to proceed with the proposal that's submitted.
Someone like to make a motion?
Shawna, I'll make a motion to approve the bid from Ramsey Group for the third-party administrator for CDBG, chill round two as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
This is Money. I'll support. I just have one thing I want to say. I'm going to vote no against this, and I just want to explain why. You know, the $5,000 isn't enough to do anything. You know, in these low, these low income situations, it's federally funded. And as a kid, I was involved in some of this. The contractors aren't the most outstanding people in the world, and a lot of people get taken advantage of. And I just don't think with the $5,000 cap, it's all that great a thing. So that's why I'm going to be voting no. That's it.
Okay, we have a motion, we have support. Do we have a roll call, please?
Denison.
Yes.
Whedon.
Yes.
Bianski.
No.
Money.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, going down to new business. Are we skipping item A?
No, Roger's going to talk to you guys about it and explain it first before we Go ahead, Roger.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I'm Roger Swetts. I'm with Bill Efron of Dickinson Wright, and we work as bond counsel for the city. So we represent you in doing the legal work that's needed to issue bonds for public projects like this. We wanted to get this ordinance to you ahead of time. I think the plan is to, to hopefully, if it's your pleasure, to adopt it at the next meeting, but wanted to give you time to digest it since it's obviously a very large and, and complex document. This can be a little bit confusing because it's often referred to as the city getting loans from rural development to fund these two projects. And so there's a, a water loan and a sewer loan that, that rural development's committed to, to, to give to the city. But by, those loans, while they call them loans, under, under their, under their rules, under the same letter of conditions that obligates the loans for the city, the loans have to be made through the issuance of bonds pursuant to the legal process that the city has to go to under, under Michigan law. So what you've So what you've got in front of you is a bond ordinance, but that is basically the document that's necessary to implement the two rural development loans. There will be additional documents that will come from rural development, there's gonna be a loan resolution for each one of the loans that comes with them. And so in total, there will be three, um, three approvals needed. The bond ordinance and then the loan resolution for, for the water loan and, and the one for the sewer loan. Now, your system is a combined water and, and sewer system. So, while rural development divvies this up and there's a separate loan resolution for each one of those, and there'll be a separate bond issue for each one of those, that's just the way rural development does it. For, for legal purposes, um, these are water and sewer system bonds of the city, and so just one resolution adopted so we don't bury you with even, with even more paperwork. So what this res, what this ordinance would authorize is, is a total borrowing of the two loans um, in the total principal amount that rural development is committed to. This is an not-to-exceed number under the ordinance, and so as you continue to consider the project and defining the scope and so forth, you can come down from this number, but it sets the ceiling above which we, we cannot go. And so we like to use the ceiling just so that you've got flexibility to maneuver as the engineers continue to, to, to look at things and, and work everything out. Yeah, as your rate consultant mentioned, um, these are at very low interest rates, uh, being subsidized by the USDA. And so the combination of that forty-year repayment schedule that you have and then those, those very low interest rates at one point three seven five is gonna offer a lot, uh, lot lower debt service than if the city had to go out to the bond market to do these projects today. You know, you're probably gonna be capped out at twenty to twenty-five years at the very most um, in the length of maturity for bonds in the, in the, in the bond market. And so that's gonna mean each year there would just have to be a much larger amount of principal and interest paid to, to pay it off in that timeframe. And then market rates are, are, are much higher than that USDA, USDA right now. You're probably looking at, at upwards of four percent, um, maybe even close to five percent to, to get that done. We, we let the rate experts talk about that as a lawyer, that's not my expertise, but that, you know, we, we see, we see that out in the bond market. So these are revenue bonds of the system. Um, as also was mentioned in the, in the rate analysis report, the city has outstanding bonds for both water and sewer that have been issued in the past. And so you've adopted, uh, the city's adopted in previous, uh, commissions, um, similar ordinances and, and for the two thousand and nine slash ten bond issues and then the twenty twenty bond issue. So this is just leveraging off of those previous resolutions. The structure is dictated by those, by those ordinances. Excuse me, sometimes we call them resolutions, so if you hear me mix those terms, it's, it's an ordinance in your case. So, that dictates the format and we're just following off of that. Um, and then also the Revenue Bond Act in Michigan to define the, the, the terms and structure of this, of this, of these two, these two bonds. One, um, additional, um, feature that you see with, with rural development that's helpful to the city, and you'll see that also, um, being budgeted for in the rate analysis, is the city is gonna have to fund what's called a debt service reserve fund for the bond issue, which is basically about the size of one year's payment, which will be set aside and, and kind of be a rainy day emergency fund in case the city ever falls short on revenues. In the bond market, you'd have to borrow that money upfront, or take cash, if you had cash, to cash fund that upfront. Rural Development's gonna let that be funded, uh, by you over ten years. And so you'll see in the, in the ordinance, there's the, the numbers that will need to be set aside for that funding, as well as rural development will require you to set, set aside some money every year for repair, replacement, and improvement to basically make sure the city is budgeting, um, to have cash to pay for more short, short-lived replacements. Obviously, big, large projects like this, it would be impossible to, to cash fund. But, Rural Development does wanna make sure that the budget is including some of those funds. So, i- i- in effect, we've got, uh, the ordinance approving up to a million, uh, or eighteen million, one ninety-seven of bonds um, at the interest rates that rural development has obligated this to. You've got the advantage with rural development of the fact that they actually obligated these interest rates a couple of years ago when they gave you the letter of conditions. And unlike the banks, they give you the lower of the rate at the time, or if rates were lower today, they would go even lower. But, you know, where we're at today, that's not gonna be the case, so it'll be at that obligated interest rate that was in the, in the letter of conditions, and then payable over forty years. Some of the other features of revenue bonds, and, and this is dictated by the, by the ordinances you already have in place. But, the city does need to, um, and this is why the rate analysis is so important. As revenue bonds, the, the city does need to keep the rates in place to be able to make the debt service payments and pay to the operation and maintenance of the system, and that's a legal obligation that the city has by its previous bond ordinances that will be repeated by this bond ordinance, as well as, as, as the Revenue Bond Act in Michigan. So it's a good thing that you're, that you're, you know, investing the effort you are into making sure what you need to do for that. I'll stop there, I know it's a big ordinance and, and feel free to ask whatever questions you may have.
See, I, I, it was my understanding that when we did the wastewater treatment plant that we just completed, that, um, that we were mandated to do those eight percent increases every year to make sure, when we took out those loans, to make sure that we could pay that back. Is, is that correct?
I, I think that's roughly correct. It's not mandated in the sense that there was a, a, a specific number placed to it, but what that ordinance requires is that your current rates in every year are sufficient to be able to make your debt service payments and you're.
And set some aside.
Yeah, and you're obligated annually to, to adjust that, and if your rates would dip below that, you would be in violation of that bond ordinance.
I can help. It was never really presented that we had to do that, and that's where that number came up from. You know, and that's why we did it. So, I mean, it's, we knew we had to do it to, to, to do the money. And the sewer plant, I mean, the sewer, the old sewer plant was ready to fall apart, literally.
Right.
We were just waiting for the day it was gonna be a massive emergency. So, I did wanna ask you, how long do we have? You know, if something happens catastrophic in the city, how long do these bond guarantees last? Do we have five years on these, do we have twenty-four months on these? You know, as far as the note that we've got, the promissory note that we've got?
As, as far as when you have to make your payments?
No, when we have to actually start using, when it start, is actually implemented. I mean, we're not gonna have to start making payments till we start borrowing money, correct?
Right, but, so, so the way rural development works, kind of unlike the, the, the sewer bond that you did, where you got all the money at closing upfront, here, you won't receive the money until you, you need it. So as the, as the construction proceeds, the contractors will submit bills, the engineers will approve those bills for you, you'll approve them and then send them to rural development for, for a loan draw so you can pay the contractors. So that's another benefit, you're not gonna actually be paying interest on this until you actually receive the money. Now that said, you know, once you approve the construction contracts, if you do that next month, you know, bills are gonna start coming soon. But it's probably gonna take, uh, I would say twelve to twenty-four months for the loan to fully be drawn down. Now, the first interest payment will be six months from the, um, from the date that we close. So if we would close in, in late July or early August, you know, you're looking at about six months from that for the first interest payment. That will only be on the amount drawn, so it won't be a full payment on the, on the full eighteen million dollars. And then principal will, will be paid once a year, um, at the twelve, at the twelve-month mark. So probably, you know, July one, August one of next year, full principal payment and interest payments, uh, semi-annually, but not a full payment kicking in until all the money's been drawn.
What if that date gets pushed out, how far can that date get pushed out? Like, if we don't close for another eighteen months or twenty-four months, is that possible or not? Do we have to move on?
No, that, that, really, where you're at now, and this really is driven by the realities of the, the, the construction bidding process.
Okay.
You've got bids in hand that you've received from the contractors. I think they, it's an engineering question, but I think I heard the engineer say you've got a ninety-day hold period on those bids.
Okay.
So that means if you don't award those bids and start construction, those bids go away and, and you'd have to.
Restart it then?
Yeah, so basically, you know, you're, this is gonna be kicking in in, in, in seven to eight months with the, with the full principal kicking in in twelve to thirteen months.
Okay.
Okay, anybody have any other questions? I don't, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
And as was said with, with, with the financials, if you do have questions that come up between now and the next meeting, please feel free to get them to me through Tim, and we'd be happy to try and answer anything that you've got.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving down to item B, consider resolution twenty twenty-four oh six slash one seven, a resolution to adopt an eighty-twenty employer employee healthcare cost option as set forth in twenty-eleven, Public Act one fifty-two, the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act.
Okay, this is a, uh, a twenty-eleven act that limits the employers, the cities, the government units' exposure to, uh, healthcare costs at eighty percent, eh, with the employee paying the twenty percent. There's three options, you can do the hard cap option, opt-out, or the, the City of Buchanan's option of choice has been the eighty-twenty option. And with that, it requires that we adopt it on an annual basis. And, that's where we're at today for the next fiscal year.
So wouldn't, this wouldn't take place until the next fiscal year, is that?
Right, which is like, next week.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah, July first, for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah, thanks, yeah. Any other questions for Tim? Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dot zero six slash one seven.
I'll support. Sorry.
Weeden?
Weeden.
Can we roll call, please?
Addison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving down to item C, finance. Pretty broad. Consider approving the expenditures for June twenty-fourth, I'm sorry, I was looking at the agenda, not the printed one in front of me. Do you have some questions?
I asked Tim several questions about different things. The only question I have was the protocol that we didn't follow with everything we did on Victory Park. I mean, it should've went through Barb, we spent another nine thousand dollars on that basketball court. You're supposed to be capped at five thousand dollars, nobody's supposed to have authorization without pr- approval, our approval, to go over five thousand dollars. Um, it's a beautiful, you know, it's a wonderful park, but protocol wasn't followed. So, if you don't mind, I'll just make the resolution to approve the expenditures in the amount of one hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars and eleven cents.
Thank you, is there support?
This is money, I'll support.
Can we roll call?
Weeden?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Addison?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Then moving down to two, consider approving fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget amendments?
Okay, we've gone through the, all the finances, the different accounts, and we've, uh, made amendments on the general fund, streets fund, water and sewer funds, and there will be one more amendment relating to fringe, payroll and fringes after our ne- after our last payroll of the fiscal period is complete. But these are the amendments before you that we've gone through, and we've done a pretty extensive job of going through the, uh, accounts and amendments, and that's what we have before us today, and I would recommend approval of the amendments.
Thank you, any questions? Anybody like to make a motion?
This is money, I'll move to approve the budget amendments as presented.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Can we roll call, please?
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Oh, yeah.
Addison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving down to item C, cemetery chapel stained glass, consider approving the quote from BLB stained glass to repair the stained glass of the chapel. Prior to the meeting starting, um, I was, uh, approached by a member of the public who, um, was questioning the cost of, uh, that stained glass repair and thought that the bid looked a little high, they have experience in stained glass. And so I'd like to recommend that we get, uh, two more quotes. If that's okay with everybody.
Can you make a motion?
Yeah, would you wanna make a motion, please?
I'm, I'll make a motion that we, uh, request two additional bids, uh, for the stained glass repair on the chapel at the cemetery.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support it.
Thank you, can we roll call, please?
Money?
Yes.
Addison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes, can I make a comment?
Good.
Um, I kinda laid this in Larry's lap about raising money for this. I'd like to continue to lay it in your lap. There's several people out there, we haven't approached the marijuana people. I think we can word it so that even if we raise more than the ten thousand dollars, we can put it into something else. You know, if we get any promises, eh, you know?
And we, we have talked to, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but we have talked to a, a couple of different, not so much groups, but, uh, operations that quite possibly be willing to, you know, pony up a little bit on this whole thing. And I know Bruce Boss, and he does a great job. I don't know anybody who does stained glass, you know, or leaded glass, or whatever you wanna call it. But, uh, yeah, the, the, the American Legion will stand fast with its bid. But we were going to approach, like I said, a couple of other entities and just ask them, you know, for two fifty to five hundred dollars, you know? So, yeah, we may be able to, uh, raise a little bit more money.
Well, I mean, there's several out to scarecrows, you know, you gotta fill out the application. The marijuana people, have we asked at all, have we created a letter at all?
I, we have, we have not.
Yeah.
So.
Um, and I mean, I asked around about the stained glass too. It's not cheap. It's not cheap by any definition. So, I mean, we might be shocked at how good price this is, but it's a good, you know, three bids, it's a protocol, it's a good thing, but it's not cheap. We did have a cemetery committee too that did no fundraising whatsoever. You weren't on it forever.
Okay, going to item A, closed session. Tonight, the commission is scheduled to consider strategy related to city negotiations of bargaining agreements with ASME and the Police Officers Labor Council. Does the commission have a motion to enter into closed session to consider strategy related to city negotiations of bargaining agreements with ASME and the Police Officer Labor Council pursuant to the closed session provision of the Open Meetings Act under MCL fifteen point two six eight one C? Any one of you, please feel free to say I move that the commission enter into closed session?
I so move.
Thank you. Weeden, Bianski? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Addison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
It is moved and seconded, the commission enter into closed session to consider strategy related to city negotiations of bargaining agreements with ASME and the Police Officer Labor Council pursuant to the closed session provisions of the Open Meetings Act under MCL fifteen two six eight one C. We will be back shortly.
Chuck, we shouldn't be back there very long. Chuck, we shouldn't be back there very long.
You know, after this, after I, um, don't worry, there's going to be three of us that will go over. Or maybe there'll be three of us that will go over time because we're close, you know, and it's only like it's you and me.
Yeah, you and me.
And then there's a big gap slowly. And then there's people not here, but it's you and me, and I've got twenty-one in, so. There are really no, there are seven years, right? Seven, seven years is the most that we've got, so that and that's what I'm saying. It's you and me having that kind of people. Yeah. So they're going to have those guys for a long time. I have two guys, Cameron and Tracy, who are fifty-five years old that do probably shit the the thing. They'll walk out on us in seven years. So really, they're fifty-five, so it'll be six years, you know. That's what they need to go. I'm not supposed to try to, I'm not supposed to ride along with you. I'm not supposed to drive. I have to work every day. Cancel that small stuff, Mark. I have to, I have to farm the maintain all that. So I can't, I can't give up. Oh, yeah, I appreciate it. Man, I have, I have cows, goats, right? Beautiful nature. Yeah. Yep. Yeah. Mail, hey? Yeah. Owls, rabbits, goats, my son takes ducks. Main wheel, miniature horse I bought my wife first year we were married. Well, not first year, but the third year we were married. It's just one of those things. Problems. Yeah. I can only hope it's like, boy. Yeah. 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 I tell you, I like the water, and, uh, I, I like, I enjoy the water, the pool, and, uh, lakes and stuff like that. Yeah. Yeah. They walk, they run tomorrow morning, they run three, four hours. They're having something, my wife is the head cross dis. The whole, we've been, yeah, 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 that's right. Yeah. Yeah. No, they run from a track to that. They'll, they'll do it all, so, well, that's...
We thought we were so funny. Truth is, it...
We want a spring break, no, we're taking it for a month, maybe a month, a year, a house. Very crippled town, you guys have mentioned how... Yeah. She's there, she's there. She's left her house, was there. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's right. Yeah. Yeah. No, I don't want that.
He sure hasn't made any good ones.
No, it's just a different people, right? So, I get the whole thing, I... But, you know. Right.
Sean, I'll make a motion to re-enter open session.
This is money, Austin Ford.
Roll call, please.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Dianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
You're open.
Thank you. Moving down to communications, it'll be Buchanan Police Department's annual National Night Out.
You wanna talk about it?
Chief Harvey Burnett will be singing for everyone.
Yes, he will.
As long as you sing it with me. Right, just National Night Out again, against crime, and we're working to, uh, get our food donations and everything ready. I know, um, the sheriff always supports us as well, so, uh, come out and have a good time with us, six to nine, first Tuesday in August, August sixth.
Bring your squirt gun.
Thank you, Perry.
Bring your squirt gun.
Bring your squirt gun, because you will get wet. Super soaker.
Are you doing it at Victory Park, Harry, or are you gonna do, okay, you're gonna do it at the hill and do the slide?
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, this time I'd like to open it up for public comment and non-agenda items. If you'd like to make a public comment, please make ready the podium, state your name for a minute.
Good evening, my name is Chuck Hight in the Buffalo Township, so, uh, currently serving as your sheriff. As you may know, Sheriff Bailey retired at the end of last year. I was honored to be selected by the county clerk, prosecutor, and chief probate judge to be appointed as sheriff. Um, we are in an election year, so in addition to National Night Out, August sixth is the primary election. All countywide seats are primary election. So a little bit about my history, I actually started my first full-time police job was here for the city of Buchanan. Uh, that's right, so, uh, in nineteen ninety-three, from February to December, when I got hired at the sheriff's office, uh, worked in the jail, and then on the road patrol, and then nineteen ninety-nine, I was hired as a chief of police for the city of Buffalo, where I served there for three years before returning to the sheriff's office, and then spent twenty-one years as the undersheriff for Sheriff Paul Bailey. So, during that time, you know, as a police chief, mainly as the undersheriff, gaining the experience, the administrative experience, and dealing with presenting the budget to the county commissioners every year, managing the budget, uh, labor negotiations, um, basically the day-to-day operations of the sheriff's office. I've been involved in for, you know, many years. I will say I'm the only candidate that has that administrative experience, um, and looking to continue that. So very proud of the men and women that work at the sheriff's office, uh, the work they do, and just looking to continue as a sheriff, so, asking for support on August sixth in the Republican primary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Good evening, can everyone hear me? My name is Margaret Fife, I'm from Lincoln Township. Uh, I am here tonight to introduce myself to the community. I am running for Berrion County Treasurer. I will also be on the August sixth primary, as Chuck Hight mentioned, that is a very important night for our community, so I'm encouraging everyone to make sure they get out and vote this season. It is a very interesting primary season, and, um, I encourage everyone to use their civic right and go out and vote, because this is gonna make a big difference for our county going forward, so, um, I appreciate any support. I am a fiscal conservative, and I really want to help the residents of Berrion County going forward, so, and thank you for your time to be here, for letting me be here. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Hi, my name is Monroe, and I'm from one eighteen Shimmer Parkway. Today I have some good news, actually. Uh, I don't know if most of you know what Benton Spirit is, which is a newspaper coming from Benton Harbor. The person who runs that newspaper, and she owns it, is from Buchanan, Michigan. Her name is Prinsella, um, Tobias, and she wants to, she actually approached me this weekend and asked if we could do one for Buchanan, the Buchanan Spirit. So, um, that's something that we'd like to do once a month. This is not a newspaper for, um, it's not a political newspaper, it really is more about writing about the good things and getting the word out for different events, and it's a very positive one. So, with your help, um, if there's anything that you guys want to have published, let us know. I will be the one in charge of the one for Buchanan, and hopefully we'll have a new newspaper again. Thank you.
Is it in print or online?
It's in print and it's online, yeah, and it's free to the public.
Oh.
When do you think it's gonna start? Um, the first one, we're doing a four-page in the Benton Spirit for July, because we have a lot to cover. We have Victory Park that we're gonna cover, we're gonna cover, um, Gerald Busby. Um, we are gonna cover Greta Pope in the common, uh, common events coming up. Um, and there's so much more, I think in August, we'll probably cover the, um, National Night Out. Um, the Buchanan this year has their second, uh, Boys and Girls Club, and they have a wonderful participation, so we're gonna be covering that. But it's all gonna be stuff that you guys want us to cover. It's one way for, especially with an election year, it's one way for you guys to get to know the public and the public to get to know you. So we're hoping that we can, uh, bridge that gap and let people get to know you for who you are, um, and... Maybe I can, um, do better for what I've done worse, okay? Thank you.
I didn't catch the name of it, Monroe, what was?
It's called, uh, uh, Benton Spirit, it comes from Benton Harbor, but we're gonna call ours Buchanan Spirit. They're gonna go, basically, they're gonna be with each other. Right now Benton Spirit has one page where it's called the Buchanan Chronicle, or the Buchanan Bulletin, I think. So she's been doing that, uh, the Benton Harbor one comes out every two weeks, and the one with Buchanan, we're gonna start once a month. If we can get enough people to sponsor it, so that we can do it twice a month, that'd be great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to make a public comment? Norma, you?
Comes Mary.
Mary, go. I got you already written on it.
Return of vend.
Uh, as most of you probably know, Wal, uh, Rite Aid is having some troubles, they're filed for bankruptcy. They're closing at least twelve stores in Michigan, possibly all of them, which means our pharmacy would go away. So, I personally think pharmacies are kind of important to a town, you know? Like, think about it, where would you buy a Band-Aid in Buchanan if you didn't have a gas station now? Nowhere, well, maybe the grocery store, but anyway, so, I read that article and I said, "Well, what can I do?" So I went online and I sent Walgreens, where Rite Aid is sending all of their people, I sent them a little, a little message that said, "Hey, come, come to Buchanan, we would like that." And I received back a very, uh, actually well-written and polite, uh, message from them, thanking me and, and, you know, stuff. So I thought, and I don't know, maybe I'm just dreaming, but if everybody, um, sent them a little email that said, "Come to Buchanan, come to Buchanan", then maybe they would start thinking, "Hey, maybe we should look into Buchanan." Maybe they'll just write us off and ignore us, but maybe, maybe, and Tim gave me your name and number. So, and I was kinda hoping the city would get behind my little grassroots, uh, one-person grassroots program, and maybe put something on Facebook or if that's not inappropriate.
I say we make them compete, CVS and Walgreens.
I don't want CVS, I want Walgreens. I've already made our decision. So anyway, if, if, if you're, uh, you know, if you'd like to, you know, it was super easy, walgreens.com, all the way down to the bottom of the page, contact us, you don't have to give them any, you know, earth-shattering personal information. Maybe it'll help the town keep a pharmacy.
Mason, when you write back to them, tell Walgreens that it's already been decided that CVS is not an option?
I could do that.
That would be fantastic, 'cause I'd like to see the response, like, we've already, we've already been told you're coming, so, apparently Mary has already decided, so...
We're gonna have a party.
Yeah, absolutely, we've, we've already got the ribbon cutting set up.
Yeah.
We've got a building already ready.
You've already got my prescription information.
Exactly.
Be newsworthy for the new Buchanan Spirit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Already tying through, good job, Larry.
There you go.
Don't you work at the funeral parlor? Tell them.
Well, we actually, at our, at our, actually, Mary, at our, at the last Live Buchanan meeting, this discussion came up about Rite Aid, Rite Aid closing. And luckily enough, on Live Buchanan's board, there's three realtors. One of them has a building right downtown that's available and would make a perfect pharmacy, and one of the other realtors is friends with someone who, um, is a pharmacist. And I believe there might be some discussions already happening about having an independent pharmacy open up.
Well, I'd be okay with that too, I guess.
Because, because I don't disagree with you, losing Rite Aid is really huge for this town, it's sad.
You know, I was making kind of a joke, but really, where would you go to buy a Band-Aid?
No, it's terrible, we have to go to...
Where would you go to buy organic, uh, cough syrup stuff?
Yeah.
Excellent point.
But, but no, but no, that there are people who are actually trying to be proactive and are already looking into an option for downtown.
I'm very happy to hear that.
I love that.
Yeah.
So, but thank you for writing that letter, and Tim can't wait to get the phone calls.
I'm sure he can't.
Anyone else wish to make a public comment? Okay, executive comments, Tim?
Okay, on the McCoy Creek Culvert, the permit classification has changed to a individual permit, and it now requires a public noticing process. So, that, that is a little bit lengthier process, but we're still moving along on the design. Uh, the design is underway with soil boring scheduled for next week. Uh, for the front street retaining wall by the Hoven Funeral Home, uh, the survey, survey and soil borings have been completed. The design is underway, and they hope to get me a, a progress set of drawings by the end of this week. So that project's moving along.
I don't know why they're clapping, the permit has just went out another three months, probably.
I don't, I don't know if it's that long, but...
I hope not.
But it's not gonna stop much of the design work.
Right. Okay, Commissioner Whedon?
I guess, congratulations to Hannah Roberts, once again, and I know you were probably gonna say it, and I figured if you let me go first, I was hoping not to say it, but I didn't have anything else right now, but, I mean, what an exciting time for Buchanan, once again, to be on the news. Maybe Walgreens will see it, and they see Hannah, and they'll make the connections.
Be downtown?
I mean, who knows, maybe she'll be sponsored by them, we'll figure it all out, it's, uh, got the whole media thing fixed in my head already. So, Mary, you're gonna be the face of it. I, I didn't attend the last meeting, but I did watch that, and, and I'd like to say that I am... Uh, I, I didn't attend the last meeting, but I did watch that, and, and I'd like to say that I am saddened that I missed the Victory Park uh grand opening, that was absolutely amazing, uh I thought I should've FaceTimed you from Mackinac, but that might be like stepping on their excitement, 'cause Mackinac's pretty awesome, too, so, uh but that was, that was amazing, and it was wonderful to hear everybody come up at, at the commission meeting and say the wonderful things that are going on in this city, once again, you know, that's kind of the stump that I stand on, is, you know, we hear it all the time, we hear nothing but negativity and, and, and disagreements, and, and we are, don't see a lot of people being respectful of opinions, and I was really pleased to see so many people get up and only talk about all the wonderful things, and the time and effort it went into that park, uh it's phenomenal, and I can't wait to see the tournaments that come out of that place, 'cause, I don't know if you guys remember, the three-in-three tournaments used to happen quite a bit, Gus McCarry used to come in, yes, you had it, right, Matt played in it all the time, right, so uh great opportunity right there, it's got all the facilities we need, so, that's all I got, Sean, thank you.
Um, I forgot at the last meeting, but I wanted to put it out there publicly that Tom Edgar passed away the Sunday before Memorial Day, um he's been my neighbor for twenty-five years, I really do apologize to his wife and his family, uh it was quite unexpected, he was mayor down here, he was pretty controversial, but um he fought the fight, and now he's gone, the chapel at the cemetery is kind of, I pass it off onto Larry, but I'm really trying to get everybody to understand how much we need help besides paying our taxes and coming down here and asking, holding your hand out and asking all the taxpayers to pay for this, this chapel is a really good example of what we can do as a community to raise the funds, to fix them doors, and to fix them windows, I don't believe, you know, the ten thousand dollars might come in a little cheaper, but, you know, reputable or not, Larry knows the guy, but we're trying to pay for doors down there, too, we're trying to instigate, we're working on a sidewalk program, so I mean, any and all that we can get flowing, because we used to always do, the Rite Aid store, I had pretty much inside information on that, I contacted Walgreens immediately, got two responses from corporate, they're not coming to Buchanan, it's not gonna happen, Rite Aid owns the building, but not under the Rite Aid name, um it's out of Pennsylvania, I haven't actually got a phone call back from them, I don't know if they have a, a non-competition clause, you know, to where they can't allow anybody else, I haven't gotten that far into it yet, but I have been working on it since we know for sure, uh I read an article this afternoon, they are closing all Michigan stores, they are closing all of Ohio stores, and they are closing all of mini soda stores, um and that's gonna happen, Buchanan's store is gonna close in August, that's gonna happen, Niles store is gonna close in July, that is gonna happen, um I have talked to a pharmacist that wants to be in town, but it's not gonna be a Rite Aid, it'll be a pharmacist and very little front-store activity, it'd be a very small, but you'd still be able to get your prescriptions in town, but you don't know what your insurance company's gonna tell you, so um we have been working on that, and, I mean, the chapel, I'm hoping Larry's gonna find people that wanna pull money out and pay for the full boat, I really do, and I'm gonna pursue Rich on filling out the applications to the Lions and the Scarecrows and any others, the marijuana people, I think we should put a letter together, it's kinda late, business is down forty, fifty percent, but I don't think our dispensaries are gonna go anywhere, so that's all I got.
Mr. Money?
Okay, well, I'll just go write it down right, right away, uh on the, the chapel is being taken care of, uh the door situation is um in the process, we haven't run it directly through our board yet, but I have gotten a bid, uh and it's a pretty reasonable bid, uh this fellow is local, local contractor, uh I am gonna have to talk to Mr. Baker about a, basically a timeframe, because the doors would have to come off there, we would have to seal that up, so uh the process is in, in, in motion, so uh with, with that part of it, uh yeah, well, the stained glass window, uh yes, the Legion has offered up some money, uh we will be talking to, uh like I said earlier, a couple other groups, so uh yeah, that whole thing uh is in the process, like I said, we have to run it through our board yet, so it's in the works, I wanna thank Michael Rowland and his whole group for the, uh for lack of better words, the fiddle fest they had down there uh two weeks ago, I mean, if you didn't come down, it was pretty exciting, uh you know, that, that bluegrass music and everything is kinda cool, Pierce Mill was open, there was a lot of people, hopefully, I seen people coming in and out of there, I don't know how well it was uh taken in, but there looked like there was a lot of people coming back and forth, uh I sat through a few of the performances, but, you know, short fat people have a tendency to boil in their own fat, so I couldn't sit there and, and take that, uh the last, last session of it, so, uh but uh Michael and his company did, did a great job down there, uh I wanna thank the city staff, I seen quite a few of them down there, working, selling uh water and juices and whatever, so um yeah, the, it really turned out great for the city, um wanna express my condolences to the Busby family on the loss of Gerald, um when you talk about camaraderie and, and bringing a, a town together, uh you know, seventy-six, seventy-eight, everybody was in the basketball mode, I mean, those, those fellows could play basketball, they took it a long way, um and everybody was behind him, and it wa- it was a great, great time to be here, uh congratulations to Hannah, uh once again, she's um, she's proven her worth, and it's great to see her picture down here on the old bike shop wall, so I wanna.
A little late on that one, weren't you?
Yeah.
A little early, I mean.
I blame her for that, I blame her parents, but anyway, uh as I try to do, thank you to this commission for everything that they do, uh it's a hard job, uh but I think we're pulling it off, and things are starting to come together, so that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, I hate going last, you guys take all, take everything away from me, uh I, too, wanted to send my condolences out to uh Mr. Busby for the loss of his brother, it was sad to hear, um and I, too, wanted to gra- congratulate Hannah Roberts, um she is amazing, that girl just can't stop winning, and she's twenty-three, twenty-two, it's, she's got a, she's got a, a long future ahead of her, um so I wanna congratulate her, I wanna congratulate the softball team, who was one win away from the state championship uh game, uh they had a great season, and I wanna thank them, because today they painted the gazebo at the corner of Oak and Front Street, um if you get a chance to go by it, it's bright and white, um a little public notice, I wanted to just let people know that um while it's okay to take limbs and tree branches out to the curb when we do that, it's not okay to cut down an entire tree and expect the city to come clean it up, we're not a tree service, if you have friends, please tell them that, um you can't line an entire block with tree limbs four feet tall and expect us to come clean it, um it's really not fair to the DPW guys, and it's not fair to the other taxpayers either, and finally, I wanted to thank Tim for all of his hard work and his experience is um, it's showing, and um your professionalism, uh we needed it when we needed it the most, um we're, we're glad you're here, you're doing a good job, thank you, and with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
And I will support.
Your roll call, please.
Whedon.
Yes.
Dianski.
Yep.
Money.
Yeah.
Dennison.
Yes.
Your adjourn.
Thank you, everyone.